I'm six thirty and I'm going to follow the Joshua City Council order. We do have a forum present. We'll start out with our work sessions followed by the regular session. We do have a meeting being covered by Zoom tonight. If you go to the website, you can get Zoom information if anybody would like to ask a question or speak. There's a way that you can do that through Zoom. We do have a forum present. We'll start out initially with our budget workshop for the 2021 proposed budget. Mr. Jones?
I'll try to keep as short and sweet as possible. I put together, hopefully you guys received the budget brief. We're basically trying to pick the budget and can just sit down for about five or six pages. There were, I think there were a couple of remaining typos, I believe, in the final version. You know, I've got several corrected typos. They are not material typos in terms of dollar amounts, really more references to budget years, tax year, and that sort of thing. I will, you know, basically hit some hot points here. And if any of you have any specific questions about any department or any lineup within the overall budget, I'll certainly try to answer those. One of the things that I think just kind of getting started here overall is in the first page, the first page of your budget brief, which is the tax rates. As we all know, when we discussed going back to last year, the legislature changed a number of regulations. When it came to property tax valuations and how property tax revenues are raised and that sort of thing. They reduce the rollback rate, what used to be called the rollback rate, from eight percent, three and a half percent. And now they call that the voter approval rate, okay? The effective rate is now a no new revenue rate. And then, of course, we have, which I don't have in the brief here, but I do have in the main budget, the de minimis rate, which applies to cities, population of thirty thousand or less. So lots of moving, lots of additional moving pieces this year that many of us who've done this for a while have, you know, first had to, had to deal with. So our adopted rate for this fiscal year was seven, six, five, two, seven, zero. And to remind everybody who may be listening online and from last year, that was a reduction of one penny. We did that last year. The proposed budget does propose the same tax rate of seven, six, five, two, seven, zero. The voter approval rate, based on the new regulations and the new truth in taxation calculations, which are now, next year, we actually are going to be required to include the T and T, truth in taxation worksheets as a appendix to our budget. I actually just went ahead and did it this year just to get the habit of doing it. And that's in the last eight pages of budget documents. So you can see how in this, in this instance, the tax assessor calculated our rates, okay? Our voter approval rate, which used to be the rollback rate, is seven, five, five, six, one, two. I would, I would just, even though I didn't mention it here because it wasn't proposed, it's on page two of the budget, okay? I don't know what page that is in your, in your packet. I think we actually have the budget separate from the overall package. So it's page two of the budget actually shows you in the box at the bottom of page two, what our no new revenue rate is, voter approval rate, which is in that, I've already referenced that, and then the de minimis rate, as we, as we discussed that. Now, you might be wondering why our voter approval rate is below our no new revenue rate. Now, I think I tried to explain this in an email to you guys here recently. If we're, if we're not getting in, if we're not getting in more revenue, i.e. the no new revenue rate, how can our voter approval rate, which implies three and a half, more than three and a half percent in new revenue, be lower than our no new revenue rate? And that, it gets really in the weeds here with how the tax assessor has to calculate for the new law, any excess debt collection, okay? So if you, just to kind of, we have our M and O tax rate and we have our INS or debt service tax rate. These two combined is our overall tax rate, okay? So whenever we adopt a tax rate in this, one of the things that's going to be different this year is next month, when you guys actually adopt the budget and the tax rate, we actually have to adopt the M and O and debt rate or INS rate separately now. Those are both roll call votes, okay? So we don't just do the overall budget anymore, the overall tax rate anymore. We actually have to adopt those separately. I'm not sure why that's the case because ultimately your rollback rate or your voter approval rate is still tied to your overall rate. So I'm not so sure why that's the case, but we'll miss something more in your part to do. But because of, I think a lot of, the only thing I could really kind of work backwards from how our voter approval rate can be lower than our new revenue rate is because of excess debt collections. The way the tax assessor has to calculate that now is they have to go back, as of this year, they had to go back to the previous three fiscal years and they had to actually calculate how much excess of one hundred percent they actually collected in debt. Now, how do you collect more than a hundred percent in debt? If you're owed one hundred percent, you owe a hundred dollars and you collect a hundred dollars, how is anything excess? Well, what they're doing is they're counting anything that was owed previously, that taxpayers, delinquent, delinquent taxes, penalties and interest, they're actually calculating that as excess debt collection. So if you have a hundred percent that is assessed every year for your debt service rate, but you don't collect a hundred percent because some people don't pay, right? So the following year, you're going to collect, hopefully, you're going to collect what you've owed for the previous year. That builds up so much to where you start collecting over a hundred percent. That's why you'll see in the, on page three, it's actually only been one year. For since it's been on the, on the M and O side, we've collected more than a hundred percent of general fund collection. Well, this goes back to that penalties and interest that we bill for taxes. Well, that applies to both our general fund and our debt service funds. So what is happening is we cert, the tax assessor previous before SB two, which is the Senate bill that changed all the rules, they couldn't certify anything higher than a hundred percent, one hundred percent of collections. Because you'd be basically saying, we're going to collect more than we were owed. Well, now what we're saying is anything extra than what we're owed, even though it's delinquent, counts as extra debt, excess debt collection. So they went back to previous three years and had to use the lowest or are bound to use the lowest of the last three years. And for us, it was a hundred and fourteen percent. So all these that you see, this four percent, two percent, six percent, less than a hundred percent in the, in the last five years, that has come back to us in succeeding years, but it's gone to excess debt. And so we basically, what ends up happening is because people weren't paying their debt service really on time or their debt, their debt payment really on time, we get it a year later and that debt counts as extra for the twelve months that we're budgeting. You're following me so far? So we actually, that's how our fund balance and the debt service fund has slowly been growing and for a number of reasons, but that's, that's one of the reasons. And so I believe, if you kind of think, if you talk to the city manager, another budget, fights people on this, the reason they did this is to try to force municipalities to use their fund balance in their debt service fund or their ready day fund for debt service. So in which we're having to do, we're having to do, we're having to do that this year on our debt service, not only because of this new rule, but because of all the factors that we'll talk about this evening. So what happens is because of the excess, or the extra fourteen percent that the tax assessor has to certify as being the lowest that they'll collect, that drives down how much our debt service, INS, part of the property tax rate actually needs to be. And though, even though we will have nine hundred fifty thousand dollars of a revenue, nine hundred fifty thousand dollars in debt service, because of the excess of the last several years and that has been going to the fund balance, it drives down how much revenue we actually need to service our debt. So they take that off the top of what the INS rate for the following year would actually collect. Any questions so far? So that is a very, as simple as I can make it, why our voter approval rate would be lower than our no new revenue rate. So we're actually not bringing in, and as it stands, it just so happens that based on the five percent home state exemption you guys passed, we're not getting any more revenue than we can get. We're getting ten thousand dollars more than we got last year. So it's basically flat. I mean, it's, it's point three nine percent more than we got last year. But we're still considered, even if we were to adopt the no new revenue rate, which takes away the ten thousand dollars, we still have to have a public hearing, which we will have on September third. We're still going to have a public hearing, a tax, a tax increase, even though we wouldn't be actually having additional revenues for taxes. So lots of, what I think are convoluted, I don't know, I don't know what really what they were trying to do when they, when they made us go through all this this year. But it was, this is the most difficult budget I think I've ever put together. So that's a, it's a very, I hope is a, hopefully easily to follow explanation of why our voter approval rate is higher or lower than our revenue rate. So just going back to the, the budget brief, the estimated general fund tax party revenue of two point seven, around approximately two point seven million dollars. The property tax revenue that we'll be getting compared to last year on same properties, as I mentioned earlier, just, just under eleven thousand dollars, ten, seven, nine, four. So all in all, we are basically breaking even when it comes to property tax revenue as compared to the current year that we're in, based on the proposed tax rate, which is the same rate as it is now. The overall, including fund reserves, okay? And Scott asked a question about this and Eric asked a question about this today. If you look at, this can kind of be confusing, but if you look at page, page eleven of the budget, okay? It actually shows total revenues of five point four million dollars, approximately five point four million dollars, okay? Now, on the budget brief, I actually, I actually referred to the fund reserves as being sixty percent of our revenues. So what I tried to do in the budget brief is a generalization of what is using fund reserves in the overall budget. Because as you can see, the total revenues on page eleven of the budget, the total revenue is a five point four million. The total expenditures are six point oh million. And so that difference has to come somewhere. Where that comes from, the reserves that we had, that we start the year with, okay? So we're, we're assuming that one point one million is a, is a, is a, basically our savings account in general fund. As we discussed over the last couple of months, we have around six hundred thousand dollars in our general fund reserves that are restricted for using the TIF, okay? This was actually one of my very, I think, very important points when it came to the discussion about adopting the home state exemption this year because that project hits this fiscal year. And so we're going to have six hundred thousand dollars out of our reserves is going to go to that project, all in one fiscal year, most likely. And so to balance the budget, which technically, and kind of to Scott's point, isn't balanced if you look at reserves versus expenditures. But as we've been doing the last several years and as many communities do with their fund reserves, as I mentioned to Scott earlier, the very first paragraph of the city manager's budget letter speaks to the use, or the second paragraph speaks to the use of previous year's fund balances to balance the budget. And this is very common, this is exactly what we did last year and the year before that. Every year I've been here, we've had to use fund reserves to balance the overall budget, okay? Certainly the general fund. So the, the budget is balanced because of the use of fund reserves. Now, because we're going to be, when it's all said and done, we're still going to have more expenditures in twelve months than we will have in revenues. Then our fund, our ending fund balance will be less than what we started with, but we'll still have a fund balance. You're following me? Now, so, so I use on the budget brief, so it doesn't show a lopsidedness that I don't show because this, this page eleven, which is the global budget, which shows everything, is a lot more complicated than this, obviously, diagram. So what I do on the budget brief, so you can show that we actually have enough revenues to take away expenditures on the next page, I include the fund transfers, really not the fund, or fund reserves, okay? But the, I don't, I don't, actually I do, the transfers out of the general fund show up as well. So I'm trying to, trying to balance those out. So on page three of the budget brief, I obviously show where the proposed rate is compared to the current rate of other states. This is obviously subject to change as other states go through their budgets. I did not do this budget brief for the proposed budget last year. I actually did this after the adopted budget was in place. And I'd actually did this for the public so they could get online and, you know, kind of get a more of a briefing of the, of the adopted budget without having to go through all the, all the pages. So those, those tax rate comparisons are obviously going to be subject to meetings as they, as they go forward. The page four is just the adopted twenty twenty versus what is proposed, how it's different, just the bar graph there. And as you can see, the total increase, which is about a million dollars, is all coming from transfers. That is that transfer line, okay, for that CIP project, which we'll get to in a minute. And then you get a breakdown in the next one in the thousands, what each department is using their, their funds for. And obviously, for the most part, as we've talked about, it's going to be no different from any other state. It's mostly going to be personnel from almost every department, majority of their expenditures. Page five is a summary of the additional front ring requests that came from the department heads and overall, as we actually talked about the last meeting, where you guys looked at. This is what actually made it into the proposed budget, many of them didn't. Has quite a bit of cutting from, from that list. This also includes CIP projects in terms of the additional CIP expenditures that may be applied to a specific department, like the police, the police department, with the patrol vehicle replacements that are a hundred thousand dollars in the specific and then public works, the covert walls down through the farm track mower. Those are all the CIP fund, the CIP budget. So if you're not going to see those because of the capitalization policy, you're not going to see those in the departmental budget and the general fund.
Could I, could I just, since you did a couple more typos on this current?
I'm sorry?
You have a couple more typos that you're going to pin up in this packet?
I do.
Okay, maybe just star those that are put on that, on this sheet.
Oh, the ones I was referring to?
Yeah.
Yeah, so I can, I can tell you right now what they are.
We know which ones they are, but just for general public knowledge that you.
Yeah. Well, this, the one I have in my hand is the correct one. So I'll be, I can be, you know, I can update this and post this. I didn't intend to post the brief until the adopted budget came out, but I'm happy to post this proposed one as well.
I'm just thinking that way, you know, if those, I want to search and look and see, where is that compact loader?
Right. Well, I was, like I said earlier, the typos that are in the brief are not going to apply to any of the.
No, it was the numbers, correct.
It's just going to be more about what tax year is referring to and that sort of thing. So yeah, that is the overall, the overall, including the CIP fund, new and additional funding. And I'm making notes there just like we did last year as we're kind of waiting on hearing back from the super grant. Obviously, if we don't get that, those, those expenditures will come from way down. And then the last page was, is the property tax supported debt total for next year as it was estimated before the bond sale this afternoon, actually this morning. This is one of those typos during that voter approved, the very bottom, the voter approved against your sheet. It says two thousand nine, and she said two thousand nineteen, and obviously that was last fall when those, when I got ready for those improvements. And this was, this was an estimate based off of the estimated debt service for the new bonds from our bonded by.
This will, this nine fourteen, but it's the new.
Right, it's an estimate of it. And we actually have the new numbers as of this morning. It's not going to change hardly any. Our debt service is going to come down just like three or four thousand dollars for the year. Now, what it's going to do, we'll be for this in a minute, just kind of getting ahead, it's going to reduce our use of the debt service fund, reserve funds in that number. So it's really not going to change our debt service, it's going to just change our overall fund balance, projected year end fund balance. So overall, kind of the hot points again, we are only proposing that the tax rate remain the same. We have a overall M and O, overall M and O increase when it comes to spending. On page six of the, the budget, which is in the city manager's letter, we have a two point seven percent increase in overall M and O spending. And M and O is just, is going to be everything other than capital outlays, debt service and those transfers. So that's just what we, what we spend every day to get this stuff done is increasing by less than three percent, which is, you know, that's after, that's after quite a few, quite a few cuts and reductions and whatever you ask for. So and obviously, when it's speaking, when we speak to the overall growth of the city, this has been one thing that we actually have been, been able to take advantage of in the last couple of years. Well, you know, but we did it last year, you know, we, we had some growth and we were, and we were still able to hold it actually by penny and use some of that growth to pay for some extra stuff that we've been needing. And I will say, this year, we, we gave zero, like I said, but due to the home state exemption, the growth that we experienced in the last twelve, twelve months, we basically gave that back, if you want to look at it that way. So we're not getting any more than we, than we got last year. And then one, the one other thing that I would draw your attention to before I get, or ask maybe more specific questions, is, this is going to be on page thirteen, oh, actually, fourteen of the budget, which speaks to, this is where you get into the actual detail of segment of revenues by source. The previous page is a, is a categorization list of those or summary of those. This gets down to what, you know, what are the property taxes, what are the last compensation fees. You'll see a significant jump about two hundred and fifteen thousand dollars in general fund current taxes. The way this worked is in order to be able to fund the Joshua Station project, which is going to be funded by the restricted TIF reserves in our general fund, okay? Which was about forty percent of our general fund reserves. We had to make a decision on, after I cut as much as I felt like I could cut, what, how do I raise enough revenue to pay for that project, but also not dip too far below our fund balance policy? So as, what ended up happening is there were so many pieces I had to put together to make it so where it all worked as, as a whole. So what we did is the actual debt service rate, if you look at, if you refer back to page fifty eight, this is the very last page of the budget. This is in the truth in taxation worksheets. This is the two thousand twenty debt rate that was, was calculated based on the estimated debt service we would have as eighteen point, eighteen five one nine oh cents, okay? So based on the debt rate or the debt service that we told the tax assessor we were going to have, which is that nine fourteen change, that's the debt rate we had. Right now, our, our debt rate was, right now, it's just over twenty one cents. So that three cent difference, what I did is I took that, the debt service tax rate, moved it over to the M and O rate to give me another three cents in the general fund without increasing our overall tax, tax rate, okay? So we're servicing our debt, we have enough to service our debt, but because we're dipping in so far into reserves and getting well below our twenty five percent fund balance policy, I had to kind of get creative on how I was raising revenue for the general fund to be able to fund those funds. So for this first year of this new debt service load, which includes the bond that we sold today, that three cents left from the debt service property tax rate to the M and O property tax rate, okay, to be able to raise those revenues enough to be able to, to keep the general fund pretty close where it needs to be, while still servicing the debt that we will have next year. And that is going to be reflected on that page. Back to page two, okay? So the, the M and O rate and the tax rate, that's where you'll see the difference compared to this current year. Fifty eight, you change, fifty eight, zero, zero, eight, the M and O rate and eighteen five one nine, which is taken directly from the truth in taxation worksheets, that's the difference. And it is, it is literally a two point nine percent, a two point nine cent difference. If you look back at our current, our current M and O and INS rate, that's the difference. So took those about three pennies and made the switch so we could, we could basically save, save the general fund for about twelve months. And then the plan is next year, that goes back to the INS fund and then what's the debt service payment will be based on that rate. So all in all, because the Joshua Station project is hitting this year specifically and some of the other, the SB two changes, the home state exemption that we adopted, that, that project hitting this year, the growth that we had, you know, these, a lot of these things that, while not, trying not to actually change the, propose a different tax rate, certainly a higher tax rate, that's what, that's what I came up with. So with all that said, I'll entertain any questions you guys have.
What's up? On page forty three and forty four, everybody? I'm looking at the other uses of the AEDC. I've got thirty thousand out to general fund and three hundred thousand going to the CIP. But on page forty four, we still got the thirty thousand, but only two hundred twenty five thousand.
Yeah, so on the detail, okay, so what ended up happening is when I took the top A budget, proposed budget to them, I did not have the updated engineering estimated cost, construction cost back from Pacheco Coke before I actually took their budget to them. So initially, the proposal, the proposed budget for top A was two twenty five in terms of transferring to the CIP for that project. About three days later, I got the updated engineering cost, construction cost from Pacheco Coke, and it had gone up about eighty thousand dollars. So as I actually, as I reported to the top A EDC, I wanted to show that in the overall budget as needing to go up about seventy five thousand dollars. But in the detail, it's not actually, I'm going to have to get into top A actually to come back at this and approve it after the fact.
So the three hundred thirty thousand is the correct?
That is the correct number, correct?
Yes, just wanted to make sure.
Yes, and that is actually the number that's going to reflect on the global budget on that very first page. The detailed budget doesn't, doesn't feed into the other, the other numbers, correct? And I did like to know that, that difference after the fact. And so at their next meeting, I'll be taking this back to them with some updated numbers for the top A so they can actually have official approval of that. So if you guys, you know, assuming things work out, when you actually adopt, because as you remember, council has to, has to approve everything that EDCs do. So this was just a, so you guys get a sense of what it's going to look like. I'll take it back to top A to hopefully get their question on this, bring it back to you guys for a final approval. For the three hundred thirty, yes sir, is the, the true total or the accurate total?
Scott, you got anything else?
No.
You're?
Yeah, it's a lot more than, than I'm considering what they had to deal with.
I did a great job, I appreciate it. I'm glad everything that we needed to get. Robert, you have anything? Hey, John?
Hey, Peter, Ryan, I'm sorry. Josh, if you were my, yes. Do we know what protests are right now? For those.
Yeah, they actually are. I'm surprised. They went down, it's about five million dollars.
Less than last year.
No, it went, it went down from fifteen million in the June, June, February to five million in the certified. Last year was just over four million. Yeah, so it was, it was fairly, fairly even from last year. It was still, it was less than a million dollars, but still only a good dollars in value. That's still value that they, we look at. Andrew, is he good? Mike?
I understand a question right now for Jake, we had a board meeting last week, last year's budget, where you talked about some improvements over there that I haven't seen happen. And I'm wondering what happened to those. There was a discussion about making a pathway around the outside of the building around the inside so that people could walk down the side and look at the animals from the outside and around the back. And I believe Mike had spoke about doing it with excess, excess materials and doing it like a fresh rock, however, excess materials. He said, oh, we've done all that stuff, shouldn't they probably do it again a year later and?
Mike, you want to speak to the, the walking path and animal control, please?
Yes, it's actually, we've included that number in the public works budget. We're going to do it in-house, it's in there for this year. Probably will be done prior to Christmas, or before Christmas.
Okay, she, she didn't know last week.
Well, and especially, Jake, do you have any, do you have a super call up?
Carl.
Yeah. So one of the things when it comes to budgeting and that sort of thing, it's too short overseas. I don't control the budget. And so all the budget stuff comes from him and the conversation that I have when it comes to there. That department's budget is what. And so, all the budget stuff comes from him and the conversation that I have when it comes to there, that department's budget is with him. So, with that said, all the department supervisors, they have to have access to the budget documents that we use. It's all on our server and everybody has access to it. And everybody, you know, if you're not in it a lot, like I'm in it almost every day, it's kind of second nature to kind of click and vote, you know, vote and know what numbers to look at. I will say that, if you look at animal controls overall budget, and like Mike says, references, that walkway, actually, PD's taking that, that extended drawing. But, you know, we've got a significant amount of money, well, I say significant, it's ten thousand dollars compared to last year's budget, about, you know, almost twenty thousand compared to what we're going to end this year. And that was, we did have to cut on a few things of what they requested. We just didn't have enough money to get everything. What I asked them to do is their additional twenty requests, which you guys looked at last month, I asked them prioritize. Number, what's your priority and what can, you know, rank them, and I just fit in what I could. So, there are some things, I think it was the cat cages, that were like fifteen or sixteen thousand dollars. I think it was the kennel doors, that was another fifteen or sixteen thousand, that was thirty-two thousand dollars that I couldn't do. So, we were going to fit in, you know, some floors and something, the fence copper and some other things that they were hoping it would work. But that, yeah, but that pathway, we'll, you know, we'll have that.
Rick, did you have anything to preach?
No.
Right then. Thank you, Josh. Appreciate it, guys, sir. Good job. Next item is to view and discuss questions related to current budget. Anybody have any questions on the current budget? All right, next is review and discuss ordinance number four seven four that two zero zero that regulates fences within city limits. I'll take that one, that's basically the one I asked for. And this is where we've had, every time somebody wants to have an eight foot fence, which I think there's a lot of good reasons people may want those, if they come in and do a variance.
Did you stay with you about the drainage issue?
Did I skip that? Oh, you sure did. Okay, let's do drainage issues. Mike, we're going to talk about any updates on the drainage?
Sure, Mayor. The Tex dot has finished the, the cleaning work that they did along all the bar ditches from Burleson through Joshua into Cleveland. We've also had, they came out and checked the culvert that they have that goes underneath one seventy-four, where the water flows just to the north of the pet pines and goes, crosses under one seventy-four. And that culvert is adequately sized for the volume. It's in good shape. It's not impeded. Burleson has agreed to clean out that earthen channel that runs from one seventy-four east to Mountain Valley Boulevard. And it's, it's pretty heavily, I mean, it's pretty heavy with brush and debris in there. So that's going to increase significantly the capacity, and we're hoping that that will eliminate the backup. We did find one partially collapsed culvert. It's in about a forty-five foot stretch that goes, it's just to the north of Dr. Poole's Drive. It's a culvert that was installed at some point by the people who were working on that building that's owned by Mr. Wright. Jay said has agreed to help us evaluate that. They've got a camera that we can roll down inside there and take a look at that collapse and see exactly where it is and how much it's impeding. But you can look in there and see just from the eye that, that it's come loose a little bit. It looks like it was actually one size that was fitted over a smaller size, and it's begun to separate a little bit. So, but once we find out for sure what that is, then we'll get with Mr. Wright and work on trying to find a solution for that. And once we get that done, then I think we may be in a point to have some conversations about down the road and looking at what available resources there might be to improve that. We have not communicated any of our findings currently with Dr. Poole or Mrs. Wolf or Mr. Wright. We were going to wait and get the extent of this culvert and visit with him before we talk to them to see what we're going to be able to work out to get him to, to work on a repair or work with us on a, on a repair to fix it.
Mayor, any questions? Would you like to make?
Yes, sir.
And then we'll talk about the fence ordinance again. Again, like I said, I would like to just say if we increase it to the eight foot, this really, I know there's been, talked about the whole of our subdivisions. You know, the new ones coming in, all the new subdivisions have HOAs, and the HOAs will still be able to control the height of the fence in that particular subdivision. So this is more for, you know, the ones that we've had a lot of Main Street where Main Street sits up high and hooking down. I know I've had a housing before where it was nice to put up an eight foot fence just to do it. So I would like to see us change it to, instead of six feet, it would be eight feet, and that would be the maximum. But that way, they might come in, file a hate war, hate money and everything just to get a variance, which I don't think we've ever disapproved one of our, approved. So I think it's just something we've put a burden on the citizens that, you know.
I would just, I would just add, in the five years or almost six years I've been here, I think we've only had three or four laws.
Yeah, yeah, I think we've had about one a year.
So, I mean, only in the sense of, I don't know necessarily if the six foot maximum is creating a problem if you take it up one, one way or request a year, but just as a, just as a point of reference.
To me, it's just like, you know, it's just something else for my citizens to do that, you know, it ends up being a formality if we're going to approve them. So I, like, we don't all agree. Anyway, so that's my suggestion. So I guess the way it would work is if everybody else was okay with doing that, we'll put it on the agenda for next month. For places to know, I agree, like we need to do that.
So basically, we're going to bring the residential into the line with what's the non-residential.
Right.
I'm doing that.
Well, just so you know, or just to kind of, another point of reference, there's a reason why how the commercial fence regulations, they're a little bit higher than your standard residential, but you typically want more of a visual barrier, especially in cases where commercial abut residential properties. There's a reason why that eight foot is there for commercial.
But this would also work for like security enclosures and everything else, which, you know, blocks it even more. Everybody okay with eight foot? All right, again.
I'm understanding what Josh should say here. Could we fix this before this would be approved by P and Z, or yeah, P and Z instead of a, you know, the council? Away with six foot unless, or whatever, granted, but.
Well, right now, because of where the regulation is, it's kind of standalone ordinance. So it's really not under the offices or the authority. It's not in some, it's a standalone ordinance. It's a, it's a part of the building ordinance in chapter three. So, it comes to the council just by default, because it doesn't go to any other board. And in the regulation, as is included here in the ordinance, it actually speaks to that in terms of who, where you get the waiver. So, we would have to, in order for it to be a P and Z issue, we'd actually have to include it in the zoning ordinance, because otherwise they don't have any authority to.
I just kind of like to see the eight foot, you know, neighborhood where your adjoining neighbor has no, no input into it. They want an eight foot fence next to their house or what, if they're already six foots all around?
Again, the issue was regular subdivisions, HOAs, in one of his hearts, you know.
Well, I, you know, I don't want to, I don't want to, I really don't, it doesn't, you know, I don't have any personal dogmas. But I think on my neighborhood, well-established subdivision, but we don't have an HOA in our subdivision. So, you could very literally, after this, I mean theoretically at least, I don't think this is going to happen, because again, we don't get tons of requests like this, which is, I think was why a waiver actually is a good idea. But you could theoretically have him come in and saying, oh, well now I don't have to get, I don't have to get permission, and you start seeing eight foot, you know, fences where maybe some people don't have enough, you know, money to put an eight foot fence in, and somebody does. And so, and you have, you have shared fences, I want an eight foot fence there, and the neighbor, next door neighbor doesn't want it, and you can have, I don't know, I guess, parallel fences, I don't know. I can just kind of see some, some maybe negative impressions of it.
Yeah, I'm not a fan of just a blanket statement of people across the board moving forward. Because I just think that it runs into more, you know, aesthetic issues, a whole lot of, you know, and it does go both ways. I wouldn't want an eight foot fence between me and my neighbor and such, just, you know, on a security basis and so forth. They're near that little bit more visibility, nice center, some privacy, that's fine. But I think I swear on a one by one basis, it can be evaluated. This happens to be a corner lot, I have to step back up against a thoroughfare on another house. Those are type of things, and we do take into consideration. When we look at it, they're pretty simple. But making it once, twice, three times a year changes, not being able to get somebody asked to do it, but to blanket do it. And then, you know, like Josh said, people just start to just make it an automatic thing, and you have, you know, all these varying levels of fencing and such throughout a common neighborhood. Not Joshua Meadows, that's not going to have fencing, you know, but, you know, there's some, you know, the Cooper Valleys of the world. And the whole of the neighborhoods out there that we got are the ones that really, you know, I would, were to protect. Be able to keep the uniformity that's already there, as opposed to just, okay. But it's kind of what we, what had happened to us with the building materials, you know, on the reconstructions stuff and all that. And I have, now we're not able to control that, and so we're starting to see some, you know, we've got a metal building there, you know, instead of masonry on one seventy-four, we got some stuff that'll start to, you know, and, you know, not look as, as appealing in, you know, that, you know, that I think the city, you know, has a little bit more, more visibility with. But that's just kind of my, my opinion. I'm not a big fan of it.
I will, I will say, there's just kind of been a point that I didn't think of, and I wish I looked past too short about this, is the, the law enforcement kind of security aspect of this. And I didn't, I felt, I felt the ask.
Yeah, that's true. I will, I will people looking in your car with eight foot.
No, that's true.
I did another.
I'm just talking about it from a police department, law enforcement, you know, perspective.
It may not be any better. It's different still to six foot fence.
For some people.
I know.
But let's face it, let's face it, the last two that I've been in were done strictly because of elevation issues. Strictly. One of them was, there was a drainage that went down the back of the property that tailed off. And a six foot fence would have been about a three foot fence at this level, to be six foot fences. And he was asking for the eight foot to just equal up, so that he had the equivalence. But another one was a guy that came in and asked for one because his.
Well, my street, you can see it through his pool.
Yeah, you can see it through his pool, and he wanted it because it just, and so aesthetically, it fit. I don't see a lot of people going to spend any extra expense for an eight foot fence if they don't have to, because it is tremendous. Being used to, been in the fencing business, it's a tremendous two foot fence, because it's special next fence. You don't just throw down a load by it. So it's, I don't see a problem with it being acceptable, because I don't think it would be common.
But I just think it's ridiculous for us to charge a fee for them to be able to do that.
So get rid of the fee.
Well, that's what I just said.
Except, but I have.
That's just what I said.
We're still talking, so. Yeah, maybe we do that, and we just break the fee, but still ask them to come in for a waiver.
I mean, that way, you know, we're still having to talk about it. Next, instead of it'll do it in two weeks, it'll take in, well, six weeks to get it done.
That's the equivalent of what you're asking at the time. I just don't want to have to, like you said, I don't want to have to cost someone extra money just to come in and ask for two more, two more for the fence when they actually need it. And it, it could still require arrangements, but you're saying waive the fee.
You can keep the process we have now, keep it all the same we have, but waive the fee for when somebody does want to make that adjustment.
The only fee we're waiving is just the application fee. You shouldn't have to pay for it. Permit fees without paying for it, you got something you can get, but at least they're not having to pay extra money. You know, when they've actually got a legitimate reason, and it's what other people do and other shit.
Yeah, I don't think even staff, like, I mean, we don't really care about the fee either. It's just because it's in the ordinance, we still charge a fee. But could we, since we're talking about this, can, I mean, the last one you guys approved was actually after the fact? They had actually already put it up and basically represent it. So can you guys discuss, or maybe whether you don't think it's advantageous, maybe to put some wording in there that no application will be considered after the fact, that sort of thing? Because you're kind of getting, the point you made earlier about basically just proper standing, it's asked for.
You might have the legitimate, you know, for somebody to split one end, so what are we going to do, tell them we got to take the fence down?
That'd be the same as we had, speaking of the metal building, we have regulations on the electricity and how it gets wired. They went in there and did it wrong, and we ranked out them and we made them redo it all.
Yeah, I mean redoing electricity versus.
Well, but the point is the regulations, so that being kind of after the fact, well, I didn't know, and so now I'm just going to.
Well, you can, you can put it, you can put in a fee at that point.
Go ahead, put it in the map.
I don't want to cause a good one.
Well, yeah, and the case of this, this last one, this is what happened. They defined you guys approved it after.
You can step up to find some. I mean, you could, you know, since there's not a fee involved at all, you can step up to find aspect if there's going to be, you know, surplus type of issue.
Well, my point, only point is, is it just kind of puts you guys in a box to where you have to approve it. Because just like Joe said, what are we going to do, make them tear it down? Well, by the regulations you would. But you guys, we're all human. You're not going to make them tear it down, so, you know, let's get out ahead of that.
Same thing with a six foot, if somebody builds up a six foot fence, they pull permit, what do we have to do?
Well.
I didn't, they got permitted, so I mean, I don't think what, it should be any different.
Well, but the only, the only difference is the six foot fence is allowed without, without a waiver. So, in this specific case, there's an actual step for the eight foot fence that they need to go through.
But they didn't pull permit either.
A masterly fact.
That's what I'm saying. If they had done it in the proper ways, there wouldn't have been an issue anywhere. But somebody could do that with six foot, and they could go build a six foot fence, and then until somebody catches them, then we say, okay, well, you got to pay a fine and do a permit. So I don't see why we would penalize somebody that built an eight foot fence. I don't know.
Well, because the eight foot wasn't allowed. That's the only, that's the only reason, that's the only difference.
So you're saying tear it down the fence?
No, they would come before the council, the council decided at that point what to do. Because you may have a huge major objection from a neighbor that has a shared fence, and they're tearing their fence down too. And now you have some other things to take into consideration, and it's such, so I mean, it's not just always just a one sided deal. And so when somebody does, you know, break the rules, then that's kind of where we have to mediate that and find out was the right choice. And for the most part, it has been fine, but it could be a position where, you know, they're putting an eight foot fence up and the elevation's opposite of what he done to it. And you can't even see a house there, you can't see a roof ladder, there's just sometimes that's not. You don't want to see it, but still.
Well, as you said, security for the eight foot fence, lock that, somebody's screwing the house.
Sure, well, why not, because then we're just letting it up because.
Oh, because our rules say that you paint your fence has to be even with the house.
Yeah, so this would come down to, it's the rules say, and they just have to come up with a force.
I said, hey, we can still charge them when we did it, and that's, that's fine with you. I was just trying to get it to where we've approved everyone in ten years of a pin higher. Every city, other city I've ever lived in, if there was any big deal.
The same thing, we said the same thing for five half, it's only one, it's pretty much a third variance that's been before, it's been like two years, we said, I mean, there's a whole bunch.
Well, and that's actually a good point, a point I was going to bring up, and you know, if we're going to, very, very, very generally, we're going to talk about removing waiver, you know, the necessary, you know, waivers that we actually have in place, I think it's probably a good idea to talk about, you know, generally one, or get rid of one, you know, talk about the rest of the two. We could certainly bring you guys a list of what waivers, you know, comparable P and Z or comparable council, if that's something you guys want to start looking at, whether we're starting to, if you guys want to start removing the waiver, you know, requirements, and also start looking at them all, I mean, if that's.
Like I said, this is the one that just seemed like to me it was a little bit out of place. Everybody else says, no, that's, I have a fee, I brought it up. I just thought we're trying to be, assuming that, you know, we're not nitpicking everything that somebody tries to do. If you own a property, you ought to have the right, some rights can be what you want to your property within limits.
Well, I'm going to shout them down, I said, I'm going to say right here, you just said it within limits, you just said it. And so it's just a limit that, you know, may not be exactly the.
Well, it's between me and you, you, you like six foot?
Maybe that's what I'm saying, is that's, that's the thing with that.
The, the only point I'm trying to make is ultimately it comes down to staff. We're the ones that end up having to enforce this, we're the ones that have to process this and everything else, so. When, when these types of things, uh, speaking of nitpicking kind of being nickel and dime, what, what waivers we have currently. That maybe the current council doesn't like for this one or is okay with that one, it, it puts staff kind of in a really odd situation of, well, you can get away with for that one. But you can't this one without approval or we charge for that one, we don't charge for this one, so in a very practical, but in a straight away, it makes it difficult to. What's that?
If you get, get rid of one fee, you got to get rid of all.
Well, I, I obviously wouldn't.
You're talking about waivers.
Right.
Is, is it? Is it possible that the waiver can be? Such that, uh, there's criteria to meet the waiver, whether or not, and we can turn over the, um, approval back to city manager.
Well, that.
Has to necessarily come to us and the waiver still has to go. And that we, we say for that specific, you know, for the fence waiver, let's say. Um, you know, if it, if it doesn't impinge on another, um, property on their rights. Or, you know, whatever we come up with, I think it's worth discussing.
Well, we actually, we actually already have that, uh, now we don't specify what is accepted as justification. We just ask them to provide and writing what the justification is to you guys. And that's just something you guys are, you know, should be considering as you were considering a request. And, and like in this is of this, the main street one, you have this, you have this topography issue where coming out of one side of the main street, you can look down into the. Into the house, I think that's something that is legitimate justification. Uh, but like in my neighborhood, where everything's basically the same level, I mean, what would be. What would be the justification for wanting to replace your six foot fence? That'd be. Well, right, well, yeah, when you, when you talk about very specific, you know, case by case base, but that's the entire point. This is, the, the waiver process now is a case by case basis issue. But, uh, now granted Scott. The whole one fee or no fee, that actually doesn't really apply because there are some waiver, there are some requests or our fee schedule. That really paid for staff time, there's a lot of processing that has to go through a specific request. Uh, any application that we have has a lot of staff time to it. This, this specific waiver doesn't really have a lot of staff time. I would even say that because we especially collect what the, what they requested, gives us to submit to you guys. But when you talk about some of the other, you know, plat, plat applications, that kind of stuff, there's a ton of staff time goes into those.
What we're talking about is I want an eight foot fence, my neighbor wants a six foot fence. I come in, get a waiver, put up my eight foot fence. All right, that neighbor then comes in and they want to do a plaque change, they've got to pay for the waiver for us to, to look at. How's that fair for one to the other? It's not fair to have an eight foot fence against a six foot fence. Uh, next thing you're going to do, you're going to say that every time somebody replaces their fence, everybody that's in line with that fence has to put up a new fence state. So that everything stays looking uniform and nice.
You lost me when you mentioned the plat fee, I'm.
The waiver fee. Okay, if, if you got to pay a fee for somebody to come in and change the plaque, a waiver fee or whatever.
Well, no, there's not waivers that are, that are part of plats.
Okay, this, you got waiver fee for one thing, but you don't have to fix it. How's that fair that, that in this case, you don't have to pay a waiver fee, but in that case you did.
Oh, yeah, when it comes to waivers, I would agree with you.
So, you know.
That was my point earlier, if you're, if you're going to, if we're going to, uh, consider getting rid of one waiver fee, you might as well consider getting rid of all the waivers.
But you were saying that in certain waivers, there's so much.
No, in certain applications. Not every, not every.
Talking about waivers, not applications.
Well, but you said fees, and so I, you didn't even, and I just played terminology here, okay? So a lot of our fee schedule isn't specific, they're not all for waivers, some of the permit fees and plat fees and that sort of thing, so. I just want to make sure we're all talking about the same fees, in this case waiver.
Waivers wait, that, 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 that fees, so, so forth, but. Like I said, if, 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 if we're going to tell somebody who wants to put up that eight foot fence for privacy reasons or whatever. On their property that they can't. Because we want to keep everybody's fence at six foot uniform throughout the community. Why are we not going to tell everybody that they have to put up a brand new fence because one person puts up a brand new fence? Because how bad does it look to have that old rundown, slack falling out fence next to that brand new, just put up fence? It, it's not an aesthetics thing. And that's, that's, that's what we're, we're looking at here, somebody wants an eight foot fence and is willing to shell out the money to do it. I've got no problem with them doing it.
Can I add something?
Oh, I do.
Somebody has a question, somebody has a question.
This is Terry.
Hi, Terry.
Hi, everybody.
Hey, you're here.
I've been here the whole time, I, I've heard a lot about fences and budgets tonight. But I wanted to, to just kind of add one thing if I could. I've seen this go on in every city for about 30 years and there's just no easy answer, I, I'll tell you what a couple of cities have done to try to address it. I, I think you can talk about six foot, eight foot. And you can just talk about that forever and I don't think there's a right or wrong answer. It's difficult to come up with criteria to make a decision for a waiver because there's usually not. Usually it's just privacy related, it's usually not topography, sometimes it is, a lot of times it's just, I want a, I want a bigger, bigger fence, I want to be more private than my neighbor. And my neighbor may be angry, so I, I, with it, with an eight foot fence for, eight foot fence versus a six foot fence. Having said that, one of the things a couple of our cities have done is made the. Have generalized criteria and, and again, they're very general criteria for granting a fence waiver. Um, having either a six foot or an eight foot, whatever you want to do. Allow waiver, it can be, it can be determined administratively, so it doesn't go to council. And a couple of my cities, city managers make those decisions for the waiver. If they don't like what the city manager does. Then they, then they go to the council with it. And, and again, so, so if they're, i- i- it, the, the council is getting frustrated getting wa- fence waivers all the time. And so they said, let's make that administrative and if they don't like the decision of the city manager, then we will, then we will hear it. That took away most fence waivers, they were going to council. Just an idea.
I, I tend to agree with, with Mayor on, on wanting to. Discuss it, but if. I'm not going to see it because I think it's. A useless. You know, waiver to have to ask for.
I just keep, you know, I, I hate putting this as a personal issue, I just keep thinking of my neighborhood. Where you have shared lock lines and shared fences, my neighbor decides he wants an eight foot fence. All the way around, well now he's tearing up my fence, we have a shared fence. So that, that is really the only, when you've got properties that have, you know, that don't have shared lock lines and you have spaces in between. I can see it wouldn't be, wouldn't be quite an issue, but for, for a lot of neighborhoods, we've got Wildwood, we've got Cooper Valley, you're going to have Heritage too, and you have these shared lock lines. And sure people are sharing fences, what are we going to say that? People can just rip up their.
But only Cooper Valley, because the other ones all have HOAs.
But aren't, aren't there regulations for that for, for shared fence agreements? I mean, I can't just decide that I want to tear the fence down and put them, and then what? It's the same as I can't cut. You know, go cut trees.
Right now, I think that's a proper, proper issue between the others, so like I've had discussions with five neighbors. Hey, we want to pitch in and get, to put up a new fence. But they, yeah, you, I think you technically would have to get, uh, legally have to get a, an agreement from your neighbor to be able to do that. That may be, that may be true, I'm just thinking in terms of.
You decided. And you had all the money to do it. Wouldn't you still have to legally?
Maybe.
Ask to do it.
But what?
Well, like the, the fence is on one person's property or not unless you've worked out an agreement of some sort. So the fence is on one person's property. Uh, this was my experience in Dallas where we had the exact same question. And if you have a neighbor who likes your fence that you bought and you paid for, and then you decide I don't want a fence. Then they lose a fence, but it's not their fence, it's your fence on your property. If you decide to take it down, they have the option of they want to go spend money on a fence that they want to put in. But it's technically not both persons fences, it's either on someone's property or not unless you've worked out a deal. To address that issue, and I know that causes issues when all of a sudden. The neighbor likes the fence, you know, I like the fence my neighbor put in. And then he tears it down and go, you tore down my fence, and he says, no, it's not really your fence, it's my fence.
Because I can't wait to take down my fence now.
Well, I think because whoever the first one is, they basically put it on that property, I think. Whoever the people are that's had known typically, when they're doing the flat, the fence was put on the original property. And then it just sort of goes, but yeah, that's a whole other can of worms.
Yeah.
A hundred dollars, I believe.
You got to wait six weeks. Well, to get on the agenda and do all the other stuff, I don't think that's six weeks, but. It's a process you have to go through, it's not a lot, just kind of fill out the permit, figure out the permit. Two hours, make the change, the ordinance, put it eight feet, next put on the agenda, we'll vote on it, it'll be the password. Everybody okay with that? Anybody have any questions regarding any future agenda or any, any regular sessions in the.
Number one, um, the house on Trailwood. Everybody thinks that there is, um. Industrial facility being built behind the house, the plant house. Uh, when I checked, this company was only for residential. However, there is this huge structure behind the house that looks like, uh, commercial.
Yeah, it's residential, very well could be residential, but they can build it, look like a warehouse.
No, 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 it, there was a house.
Right, Aaron, they could get in touch with you and you could have the code enforcement officer go out there and check it out.
Say what, sir?
There's been a question where, uh, there's a house on Trailwood and there's been a huge. Complex built behind it that we don't know whether it's industrial or, you know, somebody just wanted to, like me, wanted a big barn, put all their cars in. Uh, could we not have the code enforcement officer go out there and check that out and see what it is, to see if it's, is this illegal in a. Residential?
Yes, we could, yes, we could, uh, is this a new residential construction home on Trailwood?
Do it, I'll have Angela get you the address. I got Angela Nichols will get you the address and send it to you, Aaron, and then if you have the code enforcement officer, just go out and check it out to see what you see.
Okay, we will.
Okay, another code enforcement question, um. Again, an empty house on a street. Um, they do not take care of the back, whoever the people who inherit it in the house, they don't live there. They lower the front, however, the whole neighborhood is now overrun by vermin.
So what it crosses over from being a, a health issue, doesn't it?
It is, it is a health issue because, um, we find rats everywhere.
I think he's probably already been out to that house so many times, but I guess at some point in time, doesn't it, isn't there a code read that if it becomes a health issue?
Well, the high risk weight issue is going to be the same, hardly ordinance, it speaks to the health and sanitation stuff, it comes to nuisance. It's all the same section, it's just when there's a kind of a health and sanitation issue kind of. Goes up a little, a little bit, right, so, but this, this is that, this is the regular, how much do we do? How much do we look for, do we, if we can't see it from the street? Can we enforce it, you know, there, there's, it's all going to be a case by case basis.
This session is not about regular agenda.
Bring that, I mean, get that point in, you know, I asked about that. No problem. All right, next, any public forum, do we have anybody that wants to speak under public?
No, sir.
Well, we have a proclamation for Constitution Week, September 17th to the 23rd. Whereas September 17th, 2020 marks the 233rd anniversary of the draft of the Constitution of the United States of America. By the Constitutional Convention and whereas it is getting improper to accord official recognition to this magnificent document. And its memorial anniversary and to the patriotic celebrations which will commemorate the patient. And whereas public law 915 guarantees the issuing of a proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America. Designating September 17th through 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Joe Holler, Mayor of the City of Jackson, Texas, hereby proclaim the week of September 17th, 23rd, 2020 as Constitution Week. Next is the consent agenda.
It's mayor.
I would like to move that so long as we are required to have, or we're having these meetings on Zoom and everything. Whenever any vote is called for, that it be a roll call vote. Because we can't see everybody's hands at one time being raised and so on and so forth, and with the quality of our internet service. On the July 27th meeting, uh, I, I think we're setting ourselves up for some possible problems.
All right, Chris, thanks for that. Where we're direct wireless.
I, I don't have a problem.
I still say, I still move that because we cannot see everybody's hand raised at one time in these year.
Terry, is that, is that like a motion or?
No, no. It's a request and, and I think if y'all are okay with that, that's fine to do that.
Okay.
I, I think because of the technology, if I understand Scott correctly.
Okay, thank you. All right, we have a consent agenda, the only item on the consent agenda is presented from the July 16th, 2020 meeting and July 27th, 2020 special meeting. We've got a motion on Scott Timble, second about Mike Kid, approved. Scott, I think both. Or Terry, approved. Joe approved. Rick?
Yes.
Okay. Terry, seven zero. Next we'll get to the regular agenda, first item is considered approval of ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Jackson, Texas General Application Bonds Series 2020. And other matters incidental or related to, Scott.
Uh, council, we've got Andrew Freedom with Samco here, uh, online with us, uh. We had the, uh, this is in, in reference to the bond that were, uh, bonds that approved last November by, uh, by voters. Uh, we had actually had the bond sale this morning, I think what, uh, so the ordinance we initially had in your packet was blank, that so happened today, I think. Alice, uh, printed out some updated copy to that with all the numbers in it, so I was, Andrew's thunder, so I'll just turn it over to Andrew.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council members, I'm going to try to share my screen here so hopefully be able to see. Uh, this. We, as Josh said, we went to market today with the bonds that were authorized almost a year ago. Um, and we did, we, we delayed that bond sale for the, the reasons that, uh. We needed to be able to know our taxable assessed value before we would structure debt service. Against a debt service tax rate. Uh, and so this is the time of year that, that cities across the state are selling their bond issues. Uh, we waited until we got our certified taxable values, obviously, so we were able to target our first year's payment to exactly meet your needs, which Josh and I have worked. Uh, together over the last many, many weeks, uh, to make sure we were in sync. We received bids at 11:00 AM today on the screen are those bid results, we received five bids. The best being from Raymond James and Associates here in Dallas at a tick. Tick stands for true interest. At a TIC, TIC stands for true interest cost, which is roughly the average interest rate on this twenty-year financing of one point five nine two four zero three percent. Uh, to give you a little bit of context for that average interest rate, we've been assuming an interest rate of two point two five percent, uh, during the planning process for this bond sale. So we're extremely pleased, uh, with this result. Uh, it's where the, the bond market, uh, continues to operate at historically low interest rates, uh, primarily as a result of the COVID nineteen and the Fed's response to this pandemic going back to, uh, March and April when the bond markets completely froze up and interest rates were actually about an entire percentage point higher, uh, at one point. Um, and, and in fact, there was an illiquidity in the market, uh, during the early days of COVID nineteen where you couldn't have gotten a bond sale done. Uh, because every bond buyer that was out there, the big mutual funds, uh, and individual investors were selling their entire portfolios to raise cash. And so the market was just flooded with bonds, drove interest rates up. So things have stabilized, the Federal Reserve, uh, stepped in, lowered interest rates, they also started a bond buying program uh, to purchase municipal securities. Uh, but interest rates, very, very low, we're very pleased with that. Uh, the result of which, yeah, it benefits the city, uh, especially compared to our planning, uh, purposes. Uh, this next page is the tax rate impact analysis. This is a model that Josh and I have worked on, uh, over the last probably year and a half before we even called the bond election to know uh, what our taxable values are, what we expect them to be into the future. And then we model our existing portfolio of bonds that are already paid for from the INS tax rate uh, against what the future INS tax rate would be assuming the issuance of these bonds. And so as you can see, uh, we are hitting, uh, right at the amount that, uh, we need to set our tax rate that Josh just covered in the uh, budget proposal that he put forth to you earlier in the workshop. So very, very pleased with that. The debt service that we're locking in today is several hundred thousand dollars, uh, less than what was during the planning process of this bond issuance. If you remember going into the election, uh, there was discussion that there may not be a tax rate impact, but there could be. Uh, meaning that your taxes might have to go up in order to support this. Uh, proud to, to be able to present to you tonight that your overall tax rate is not going up. Uh, and as you continue to get more growth in the years, we've used, uh, very conservative interest, or very conservative taxable assessed value growth assumptions, uh, into the future. As you can see, we're assuming that growth even stops in twenty twenty-four. Obviously, uh, historically, you'll, you should continue to grow and we expect that to happen. Uh, and that'll further diminish the impact of that, this bond issue on your taxable assessed value over time. This last attachment are the final numbers. I'm not going to go through these in minute detail, uh, but I do want to walk you through them briefly. This first page is the sources and uses of funds. Very, at the, at the top, you can see we're issuing a par amount of three million, seven hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. Bond purchasers are gonna pay us accrued interest. The, the amount of interest owed on these bonds from the dated date of September first to the actual delivery date, which is the day we're going to close on this transaction. And funds will be wired to the city September twenty-third. The interest that accrues during that time, uh, will flow back to the city and go into your interest and sinking fund account. The bond purchaser is going to pay you a cash premium of two hundred and eighty-three thousand, nine hundred eighty-five dollars. Those funds combined will allow for us on closing to put not three million, nine hundred and five thousand dollars into your project fund. You'll receive five thousand, nine hundred and seventy dollars in your INS fund for accrued interest. And then out of that cash premium, the cost of issuance, uh, for getting this transaction completed of ninety thousand, eight hundred forty-four dollars uh, will be paid. And then the underwriters discount, which is what Raymond James is paying themselves, uh, to purchase and then sell these securities to their individual investors, twenty-eight thousand, five hundred forty dollars. And then lastly, bond insurance. And that was what the purchaser opted to purchase, uh, and it comes out of their spread of fourteen thousand, six hundred dollars. Bond insurance, uh, is typically bought, uh, it's, it's an insurance policy for the bondholder, not the city that ensures that should the city not be able to make timely payment of principal interest or interest, that Build America Mutual, the insurance provider in this case, will step in and make timely payment on your behalf. In a typical market condition, we would not need, uh, a bond, purchasers would not be requiring bond insurance. Because of the tumult in the bond market over the last several months and the relative cheapness of buying a bond insurance policy, a lot of underwriters throughout the country are going ahead and doing that. Uh, it helps them to achieve better interest rates. It's not of our concern, it comes out of, of their, uh, out of their spread what they get to pay themselves on this bond issue. Uh, but I did want to be able to explain that to you all. This second page here is the bond pricing. This outlines both the coupons and the yields for each of the twenty maturities of this bond issue. Uh, you can see that we're amortizing and it's easier to follow on this next page, the actual debt service schedule. We're amortizing this debt, uh, over roughly level terms except for the first three years where we've, uh, we're, we're making a little bit of a carve out, uh, to grow into this debt. Uh, but you can see it's gonna be roughly two hundred and forty thousand dollars a year for the next twenty years. Again, at a fixed rate of interest, it's not going to change over the course of ten years. And these bonds will be callable in nine years from now, February first, twenty, uh, twenty nine, twenty twenty-nine, excuse me. And then lastly, on this bond summary statistics page, uh, directed to what I'd call the second paragraph, you can see the true interest cost after restructuring down to one point five seven six zero one nine percent. Uh, again, very pleased with the results of this bond sale today. I'm happy to go into, uh, detail or address any questions, uh, that anyone may have, uh, at this time.
Thank you, Andrew. Anybody have any questions?
It's pretty cheap.
I'll just bring up a point and just, uh, echo what Andrew talked about, like, came to timing of this. You remember, uh, we were actually, we actually retired some debt on the general fund stock this year. So the plan was we come out basically net, uh, eat in that car, making our overall debt service and more within several thousand dollars of what the estimate was, uh, or what the overall was for the current year. The other part of it is, uh, uh, obviously now we actually have the numbers in and the actual amortization schedule, that the debt service schedule that I have in the budget, uh, attachments, the debt service fund, a budget. I'll be updating that reflecting the, the actual numbers we have since those, that last, uh, that last little column is based on estimate, but all that was in all those annual, annual premium for principal premium of a thousand dollars. So it's not gonna change a whole lot, but I'll, I will update that for the.
Anybody have any question? Uh, entertain a motion.
Make the motion be approved.
A motion by Jerry Morris, second by Angela Nichols to approve the ordinance authorizing the issuance of the City of Joshua, Texas General Obligation Bond Series twenty twenty. Anybody else have any questions? Scott? Gary? Joe, approve?
Approved.
Approved.
Rick?
Approved.
Very much, and Terry, seven zero. Thank you for your presentation, Andrew, very good.
You're very welcome. I'd like to, uh, congratulate Josh, he put in a lot of effort on this bond sale. Took the city through the rating process with standard and pores. Uh, hopefully he'll share that rating report with you all. Uh, but he's done a tremendous job on this bond sale, so my hat's off to him and his staff for helping see this across the finish line. And we hope to, we will have money delivered to the city on September twenty-third to let the project.
Good, thank you, good job, Josh.
Josh, what we come in, our S and P rating?
Uh, I'll have to get the report, I'm not exactly sure.
I mean, based off those numbers.
Yeah, it was, it was strong.
They affirmed our existing rating, which if I remember off the top of my head is, uh, A plus.
Yeah, that's what I wanted to say, but I'll decide, I want to.
Yes, that's an update from last night, yeah.
Our next item is discuss, consider and take possible action ordinance within the City of City. Previously adopted election ordinance revise the early voting schedule, the general election schedule to be held on Tuesday, November second. Uh, basically this is where the governor has authorized additional voting days, this is changing our ordinance to match what's, uh, the status that we needed. Correct?
That's correct.
Anybody have any questions? Got a motion by Scott Kimble, second by Robert Portman to amend the ordinance for the city's previously adopted election ordinance. Anybody else have any other questions? Uh, Scott? Gary? Joe, approve?
Approved.
Angela?
Approved.
Rick?
Approved.
Motion, Terry, seven zero. Next, discuss, consider and take possible action on accepting the submission of the twenty twenty voting revenue tax rate of point seven six one two four zero for one hundred dollars taxable value and the voter approval rate of point seven five five six one two for one hundred. Is that like, oh, was that an or instead of an and or?
No, so what, what you guys are gonna be doing tonight, I remember the last week, you guys, uh, appointed the tax county taxes as a Scott Porter as being the officer that is gonna calculate our rates for us.
Right.
So what this is, you guys accepting the calculations that made, based off of the, the true taxation worksheets that Alice put into the.
Listen, what our tax.
No.
Just accepting what the calculation.
Exactly, what, what the voting revenue rate, the voter approval rate should be, you're just saying we accept that, that's what they are.
Anybody have any questions? Motion to approve. A motion by Robert Portman, second by Mike Kidd, to accept the submission of the twenty twenty no new revenue, revenue tax rate and voter approval tax rate. Any further discussion? Scott?
Approved.
Gary? Joe, approve?
Approved.
Approved. Rick?
Approved.
Yeah, just, just to kind of harken back to the initial proposed budget presentation, I, I referenced the no revenue rate, but I didn't include it in the, uh, the budget briefing, but our current rate, the proposed rate is seven six five one two, right? And our voting revenue rate is seven six one two four, so it's basically even, that's where you get that extra, basically ten thousand dollars.
The next item is discuss, consider and take action on a resolution proposing the adoption of a proposed total add to the lower tax rate for this year twenty twenty-one of point seven six five two seven zero for one hundred dollars assessed, excuse me, instead of public hearing to all public hearing requirements of the Texas Proper Tax Code. Josh?
Yeah, so at this time, uh, obviously I have the proposed rate, which is the current rate of, uh, seven six five two seven zero. Um, as Alice, as, uh, informed you in background information, never account for the proposed rate. That is the maximum rate that can be adopted once adopted. Uh, typically what has happened, we, uh, we have proposed, the rate that we propose is what we end up adopting. Uh, sometimes city councils will adopt the maximum, uh, that they can go up to, which in this case would be the minimum rate of, uh, just over eighty-seven cents in case they need to, uh, when it comes to time to adopt the rate, doesn't mean you have to adopt that rate. But, but basically what you're doing is you're setting the maximum, uh, this evening. So whatever you guys say tonight, it can, it can go below that, but it can go above that, once adopted.
Any questions? Or confirm on the budget?
As proposed, I mean, you guys didn't have anything, you didn't rate one raise for it, and so, yeah, I guess that's, uh.
Any other questions? Retain a motion?
Need to, I'll make some motion if Josh, if you can, uh, tell us the amount.
Yeah, so it's, uh, let me get back to my, just so I don't. The proposed tax rate, which is the current tax rate of, uh, seven six five two seven zero, that's seventy-six cents, five two seven zero.
I assume that we've through that tax rate.
Proposed.
The proposed, probably natural tax rate.
I'll say.
All right, Scott? Gary? Joe, approve?
Approved.
I. Approved.
Rick?
Approved.
Terry, seven zero. All right, staff reports, anybody have any questions on staff?
Scott, if you want to give those to me, I can get you some answers. Um, I'm looking at the rates of, uh, traffic stops versus citations. And I, I don't understand, is this citations for traffic stop or is it all citations together?
That's gonna be all citation, but I mean, just as a practical matter, most of the citations can be rights, is be a traffic stop.
Okay, well, we did just slightly less this year than last and there are half as many citations. And I'm, I'm wondering why we're, we're stopping people from speeding, but we're not citing them for it.
This, this has been a, uh, kind of a sticky point in the budget, actually, uh, for going on six years, five or six years now, maybe four years, uh, where our, our permits and fees line has, uh, uh, on, on the citations line has dropped about thirty percent a year, of each year of the last four years. Some of that is going to be a, uh, a philosophy issue. Uh, the, the, the overall national push for community policing versus enforcement has really been making the, it's way through the veins of police departments and law enforcement agencies across the country to where it's more about, uh, uh, again, community and outreach more than enforcement. Uh, I would say, I would love to be able to say, and not love it, but I would, you know, the COVID issue has, has made a significant impact this year to where, uh, we're trying to limit how much, uh, uh, contact our officers were having with the COVID, certainly early on in the year, or in the, early on in the county year with the lockdown, certainly started happening before we had a lot, most of our PPE in place, the, the equipment, masks, policies that we were gonna have in terms of stops. Uh, but yeah, we, we give way more warnings than we do citations.
Well, my, my, my problem with that is, okay, I go pull out on the one seventy-four and I'm watching people running a stoplight doing seventy miles an hour, right? They know, they come through Joshua, there's a bad gun, new possibility, even if they get stopped, they're not gonna get taken. I'm seeing it on the side streets, people are racing up and down the streets, it's getting out of hand. And the only way you're gonna get it in hand is to start toughening up the enforcement. We have to, you know, how many wrecks are we having on our stoplights? You know, we, we had a, a person seriously injured just right in front of UT yesterday in a rear end accident. You know, we, we've got to start doing something to get this traffic under control going through our city.
Well, some of it is going to be a, this, this probably gets into the whole of the budget discussion, probably the current one is adopted and we started going to, uh, full staffing. Uh, we, we, it's a, it's a number of different aspects of, is our PD fully staffed? Uh, we've been having some service issues of having a number of, of full complement of officers over the last few years. Uh, we also have an issue of who's on duty and how long and at what times of the day. Uh, we may have two, two officers, uh, maximum on patrol during, you know, daytime, one, depending on how the shifts work out. So a lot of it is just not being in the right place at the right time. But I really can't argue with the stops versus citations numbers, because in that regard, we are, we are making the stops, we're not doing the citations, so. And, and as, you know, I know you support law enforcement, uh, most of us do here, but it's just, you know, we can't, you know, we can't tell people to go write tickets, uh, uh, to me, and this is a discussion that I've had, and I've had other city managers and other chiefs of police, and I, you know, I had the same discussion in my first city is, um, based on a, on a, just kind of a natural outcome of doing one's job, which would be the, 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 the traffic stops, you would think that there would be a certain, just by a natural kind of progression of those, that there would be a certain percentage of those stops that were, uh, ended up in citations and that would be fairly consistent during the years. We're just not, we're just not seeing that, we're just, we're seeing the citations, the activities there, as you can see in the stops. But our, our thresholds, uh, for writing the citations, uh, it's just based off of this, I, I wish, I wish T short were here, T short were here. But it really is more of this focus on community policing versus law enforcement. You know, kind of stricter enforcement of, of the law, so. A lot of that is, you know, uh, we don't have a lot going on when it comes to, uh, as you, as, uh, in terms of anything other than traffic stops, in terms of what they end up being called for, we do a lot. Uh, you know, T short puts out a, uh, connectivity sheet and that activity. You know, T short puts out a connectivity sheet and that activity report every morning. A lot of that is just check on my neighbor and, you know, help him this and help him that, and a lot of it is traffic, it just isn't always in the citations. That's the, that's the best, that's what I can have, I have for you.
I just, I just see this disparity and, and sometimes I add nothing. And, and yeah, I don't know how many times I've almost been beaten by one of the 174 by people that are flying down towards burps. It's ridiculous. And one of the things that is really related to this too, our city employees need to lead by example. I've been behind many a city truck that's been doing well over the speed limit. I've seen them run stop signs, stoplights, everything. And, and I think it's time that some of our city employees get a refresher course in driver training.
That's, that's my idea. We make the BD go through, you know, they have to requalify into firearms.
With citizens see our city trucks and vehicles doing these things, it really lessens the, the ability to enforce it. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything? I had one, I wanted to let the city know that there's a new business, Burleson Automotive that's moved in, the old Ellis Roofing Company, because I haven't seen that on any reports, so I wanted to make sure the city knew.
Well, there's a, looks like a, you know, printing and shipping store opening up right here next to the Alice Ness thing. Yeah. Yeah.
Oh, that's a new business.
Burleson Automotive, this.
No, it's, it's Burleson, I thought it was the same, one of the Burleson tire, the other Burleson. But they're both in Joshua.
Can't we ask them to change their name? We already have Joshua.
Anybody else have any other staff reports? Scott? Future agenda item, Angela?
What, can we add, please, maybe some kind of, I understand that the code enforcement officer, when they go out, they check the front, I don't know if they check the backyard, goes through something that we have.
Have you talked to the code enforcement or Aaron?
No, I have not.
Maybe, you know, if you got the, because you could, you've had the people that are playing the game, you're going to catch the run of it, so maybe.
Why, why, you just didn't tell them what our address is or, or post you, and we can certainly look into it, that you haven't, you know, contacted Aaron or Charles directly.
Angela, was that the one you emailed me on today? Yeah, I believe Mike talked to our code enforcement officer.
Yeah, I spoke to him. He's aware of it. We're working on it. Problem is, is you can't see a lot of that from the roadway. We can't go crawling around, crawling over people's fences, so that, that's part of the challenge. But he is aware of it and he's going to work on it with them.
And they have a wall, from what I understand, that there was a wall on the fence to go to the back, but there are like two official doors in the back.
Okay. We'll get some information for you next couple of days.
Anybody else have any future agenda items?
Yeah, I'm going to ask, and, and I want to put something else on your plate, Josh. I know what one of us.
And I get reminded all the time, so I get.
We, we got talks, you and I specifically about seeing, about getting a cable company to come into the city, and I think Spectrum wanted like a million dollars worth of capital improvements or something.
Oh, yeah, it's been a while.
Yeah, it's, it's been a while since we had this discussion, but I know that, that the older parts of, of the city are not going to be serviced by Halfway and the old Joshua Cable System, so on and so forth. You know, they've been doing some improvements on other parts of it as the new communities go in, they're putting in fiber optic, so on and so forth. But us in the older part of the city would like to have a possibility of getting that serviced, too. So I thought maybe if we could find out from other cable companies besides Spectrum, if there is an interest in stretching out to this area or whatever and see what we can do to all of our citizens of that.
Coincidence, co-ops coming out of the system now, or whether they're going to exclusively do it where they're doing the electric or whether they're going to expand it outside of those areas. So that might be somebody to talk to.
Not a co-op, just contacting everybody on, not a co-op, saying that they're offering, thinking about, it was like a survey or something like that.
Yeah, well, there's, there's parts of Joshua already.
God, rocket coming through on, on power lines. And if that becomes a thing, it shouldn't be just overnight, just starts flying through here.
I, I, I watch, you know, data link cable go through here and so on and so forth. I, I know there's other services that should be available, and I, I'd just like city to pursue and see what we can come up with.
Okay, there is.
I, I've got mission sucks. DirecTV, AT&amp;T sucks.
We just got rid of them.
You know, I want that move, you know, so, and, and I have halfway internet service and it's wireless, and when the tree grows up between me and the tower, I'm done. I, I can't do anything else. So, yeah, so, so I just think, if nothing else, we get a little competition in here, make that halfway.
That's what, we were very excited, I saw it, because it's not rockets. And that'd be five rockets because of wires or things.
I didn't know that. And Joshua? Yeah. Joshua, I think Joshua Meadows, from what I understand, there was an old cable company probably 20 years ago, the unit infrastructure out there. Their risers are still out there, they've been hit by cars, they've been hit by trucks, they're falling apart. Nobody knows who is actually responsible for those things. And if there was any way to get rid of those.
Where is these again?
They're all through Joshua Meadows.
What are they then?
They were, from what I understand, it was from an old cable company. Mike? Mike, do you know what the name of that old cable company was?
No, not right offhand. I know who you're talking about, but.
Yeah, they just.
These things above ground?
Still sitting out there, but it's just a difference.
Are they above ground or are they in ground?
Above ground. Well, some of these, you know, the lines are probably below ground with the equipment sitting above. There's probably not that many of them, somebody just needs to pull those over, but nobody knows who to claim permission from to do.
Are they on utility poles?
No, they're on the ground. You have the telephone bills lifted that are about yaddy high. For, that's your telephone wires tie into, it looks just like that. About, yeah, about three or four be off the ground and they got them every couple of houses. It's not, I'd say, I don't say every couple of houses, probably three or four of them.
I'll, I'll go out there tomorrow and take a look and see. I'm not.
As you go into Joshua Meadows, it's the first new street that turns to the left there, there's one right on that corner, it's held together.
Okay. I'll go out there and take a look tomorrow and see what they are.
The second thing is, back when Two Baker was here, they were working on fire hydrants and watering and servicing fire hydrants and oil, and I remember giving a report about that. Who is responsible for maintaining fire, fire?
We, we've assisted J sub and some of that stuff just because of the practicality of us doing the fire service. It's just like you've seen, probably noticed them being repainted here around town, J sub.
Are they checking them before they kind them?
Yeah, because there's.
Is there?
Yeah.
Anybody else? Uh, we're adjourned to nail that.